Like the zoning board of adjustment option. If anyone has a problem accessing the meeting, please call six oh three five eight nine three zero five six and they will help you connect in the event the public, in the event the public is unable to access the meeting via the methods mentioned above, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. The chair is in control of the proceedings and calls upon all who wish to speak in order as these, as the raised hands are observed. The board follows the meeting protocols and procedures that are identified in our bylaws. The applicant will present their case for up to 15 minutes and that will be followed by questions from the board. Next, any persons wishing to speak in favor or with questions or opposition will be asked to speak for up to five minutes and that's done first in with those that are of looking to testify in terms of support and then we'll move to those with questions or concerns. If there are any questions or opposition, the applicant will have up to five minutes to present a response and finally after that, one and only one person that had questions in opposition will be permitted to speak again and if we are at that point in time with any of the cases, I'll cover how, how we'll handle that in slightly more detail. And then all this happens before the board deliberates and determines an outcome. So we basically go through a public hearing where we hear testimony from the public. That'll all be done from the podium at the microphone or on Zoom and then we'll close the public hearing and then just the zoning board members will confer and deliberate and then proceed with some typically a vote to approve or deny it's possible to table or other outcomes, but generally we try to act on most cases here at the time of the hearing. If you are participating by Zoom and you wish to speak when the public input is requested, please use either the raised hand option, which can be found under reactions on the computer or the more menu on a phone, the chair will call you in turn and then please use the lower hand option when you've completed your question or comment. Also, if you're on Zoom, please make sure you've muted your microphone until called on to speak. And just also, if you're in the audience, please keep your cell phones on vibrate or muted and we also just generally ask that if you have conversations that you want to have, please step out into the hallway because the acoustics actually are very good in this auditorium and we, we hear everything and it can be quite distracting. Note also, all votes will be taken during this meeting will be done by roll call. Tonight, we will only be hearing requests for deviation from the Nashville zoning code in the form of applications for variances, so I'll just focus on that. A variance is a request that seeks permission to something that ordinance does not permit. Variances also have five points of law to be met, different from those of special exceptions. Per the city of Nashville bylaws and the state of New Hampshire vice statute, a minimum of three or more affirmative votes required to approve any application. In addition, this board will hear all scheduled cases if a quorum of three voting board members is present at this meeting. We have five members present unless there would be multiple recusals, it's very unlikely that would be an issue tonight. Any citizen has the right to contest the decision that this board makes. Should we render a decision that you believe is in error, you have the right to request a rehearing. Written rehearing request must be received by the city of Nashville Planning Department within 30 calendar days from the date of decision. Should this board not grant a rehearing request, you can still file an appeal directly to the Hampshire Superior Court. Please contact Mr. Falk of the Planning Department for any more information regarding that. Tonight, we have the following full board members in attendance, myself, I serve as the vice chair, Mr. J. P. Boucher, our clerk, and Mr. Steve Lionel, our other full-time member. We also have the following alternate members in attendance, Mr. Jay Minkara and Mr. Josh Neely and Estaphia Boris is on Zoom. Thank you. And then in addition to board members, we also have with us Mr. Carter Falk, Deputy Planning Manager, and Ms. Kate Porter, zoning coordinator with the city of Nashua. We'll start by taking a roll call attendance. For board members participating by Zoom, please also state whether there was anyone in the room with you, which is required under the right to know law, and state the reason you're not attending in person. And with that, I'll move to take attendance. Mr. J. P. Boucher?
Present.
Mr. Steve Lionel?
Present.
Mr. Jay Minkara?
Present.
Mr. Josh Neely?
Present.
Ms. Estaphia Boris?
Present.
And is there anyone with you and why are you attending by Zoom?
There is nobody with me. I'm actually in my home office alone and the reason for the Zoom is because of a job requirement.
All right, thank you. So also just kind of more or less alluded to it, but we, alternates may fully participate in discussions. They only vote normally if we don't have full-time, full board members present. We only have three full board members present and then also per ruling of the Planning Department, only those members that are attending in person here unless a fifth or other additional person is needed for the vote, only the alternates present, Mr. Minkara, Mr. Neely, will be voting unless one, unless again, one of us might recuse for a reason and then we will have Ms. Boris voting and we would come to that if, if the time is there. But again, Ms. Boris will, can participate and will, is welcome for all discussion, questions of the applicants, et cetera. So I just wanted to clarify that. Mr. Falk, are there any changes to the agenda?
No, there are not.
All right, I think we are set to proceed unless there's any like procedural questions from the audience. Right, seeing none, I will go ahead and read the first case into the record. The owners are Carmen V. Capone and David R. DeBloy, owners at 75 Manchester Street, LLC is the applicant. This is at 75 Manchester Street, sheet 65, lot 106, and the request is for variance in land use code section 190-16, table 16-3 for minimum lot width. 75 feet is required or 52 feet is proposed and this is to subdivide one lot into two lots, each to contain a single-family home. This is in the RA zone, Ward 3. This case was postponed from the July 11th, 2023 meeting and it looks like we already have Attorney Pearlman here, ready to speak on the case and obviously attorney, you know the drill, if you can state your name and address for the record and go ahead and present your, your testimony.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening. My name is Andy Pearlman. I am an attorney with Pearlman here at Nashua here on behalf of 75 Manchester Street Limited Liability Company, Carmen Capone, and the estate of David Dubois, owners of the property. Mr. Chairman, there is a threshold issue before the board because this site has been subject to a previous variance request and I didn't know if the board wanted to get into that. I had a, I submitted a memo addressing the Fisher versus Dover, why we believe this is, this application is materially different than what Richard Mayner presented a few years ago. I didn't know if you want to get into that or just move on.
I think it's, well, I always think there's benefit to just going through the procedural part of it, even if we make it extremely brief because I think it's, I think it's relatively clear. I can't obviously speak for the rest of the members, but I would prefer that we just, I don't even know that you really need to make any testimony, you're welcome to, you're, like you said, you already submitted a memo. I think I'd just like to, you know, see what the board thinks, but if anybody wants to chime in first, but I, Mr. Minkara?
Go ahead.
Okay. I was just going to say, I think this, to me, the case is very materially different. The scope of, of the proposal is significantly different and I really see that it is a very different application.
So do we need a, a motion to?
Say a motion that this test, that this case meets the Fisher v. Dover criteria that's materially different.
I'll, I'll make such a motion. I'd like to make a motion to say that this case for 75 Manchester Street meets the criteria for Fisher v. Dover and is substantially different from the case in 2017 on the same property.
And Mr. Boucher, thank, thank you for your second. Any discussion on the motion?
I would agree.
Mr. Neely, how do you vote?
I'm in favor of the motion.
Mr. Minkara?
I'm in favor.
Mr. Boucher?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
And Mr. Lionel?
Mr. Lionel votes in favor.
And Mr. Shaw votes in favor. That's five, nothing. That passes unanimously and so we can go ahead and move forward with.
Members, thank you very much. With me tonight is Ethan Beals from the Haner Swanson Engineering Firm, as well as Carmen Capone and Garrett Dubois, who is here with us, the property owners. We have a straightforward application for the board tonight. We are at 75 Manchester Street. I believe everyone is familiar with this site. We're right at the bend in Manchester Street, just heading northbound just before Greeley Park. A number of dilapidated old buildings that haven't been used in many, many years, overgrown site and we are proposing to dramatically improve the, this particular site with a proposal of two lots. We have proposed 106A Manchester Street and 106B, lot 106B. 106A conforms, it's a small lot right on the, on Manchester Street and that conforms to all the dimensional requirements of the city's ordinance and lot 106B complies with all the dimensional requirements of the city's ordinance with except, with the exception of the lot width at the set, front setback. We have 52 feet where 75 feet are required. That was intentional. We intentionally created a conforming lot rather than have two, split the line right down the middle and have two non-conforming lots. We wanted to create one conforming lot and then have the back lot, the 106B, that has the larger area be the non-conforming lot because that section of 106B really only has a driveway going up into it. It's not where kids are going to play, it's not where, not where much activity is going to happen with respect to 106B. The homes that you see on the plan are a preliminary layout. The homes may shift, they may face Greeley Park, they may stay where they're shown now, but that's just a preliminary plan, just to show you how the, how the two lots layout. The lot itself is kind of a weird shaped lot. It appears to be a rectangular lot, but it really isn't because there's a jog in the lot. You can see a little triangle portion of that cuts into our lot, which really creates the, the unique shape of, the unique shape of the lot, unique circumstances, which really drives the, drives the lot width variance. And we tried every which way to make the lot width work. There's just not enough frontage along Manchester Street to allow for two lots. The lot, the two lots will have a shared driveway agreement and that will address things as maintenance, long-term capital improvements to repave the driveway over the years, plowing, all that good stuff. We have, we have provided a site distance, site distance analysis from the Vaness Traffic Engineering Firm that has been shared with Dan Hudson and Wayne Husband of the City's Engineering Office. We believe that they are generally in support of what we're proposing because with the takedown of the old buildings, vegetation and keeping them down and having it grass or low shrubs, the site distance on this bend in Manchester Street is going to vastly improve. It's not perfect, it will never be perfect unless someone comes along and straightens out Manchester Street, make it a, you know, an 80-foot wide boulevard, but it is going to be dramatically better for pedestrians, neighbors, turning on to Cox, Charlotte, turning on to Lee. With the takedown of all the buildings, the shrubbery, the trees, we're going to see a dramatic improvement to, for the site distance and Ethan can talk a little bit more about that. And I think, Mr. Chairman, oh, in, in your packet, and I'll come back to this when I run through the criteria, you have a letter from Randy Trammell of the Keller Williams Office, where he addresses property values and I'll, I'll, I'll address that when I hit on the criteria. So in the interest of time, if I could have our project engineer come to speak to the plan a little bit, the site distance issues a little bit, then I'll come back and address the five criteria for the board. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, for the record. My name is Ethan Beals. I'm a project manager at Haner Swanson doing business in 3 Congress Street here in Nashua. As Attorney Pearlman had mentioned, the site is really located on the inside of a curve on, on Manchester Street. It's known to the city as a challenging intersection, also located just south of Charlotte Avenue, which as you likely know, contains a Charlotte Ave Elementary School. Knowing the existing challenges of the intersection, the city actually, within the last handful of years, installed some additional warning signage for the crosswalk from Charlotte Ave across Manchester Street, just north of kind of the subject site. Compounding the site distance issue along the inside of the curve on Manchester Street, subject property contains two existing dwellings and a garage that are really located right up on, on the frontage of the property, within the front setback, really right along the street. And due to this existing issue, Scott Thornton, professional engineer at Vaness and Associates, VAI, was retained to analyze the site distance for traffic leaving the site and analyze the safe stopping distance of cars traveling along the Manchester Street corridor. Originally, the proposed shared driveway was actually located a little bit more south of the location that you're seeing here tonight. After the initial analysis by Scott and his team, that location was actually moved more to the north in order to maximize the possible site distance. Ultimately, VAI provided the site distance memorandum that was submitted to the board as part of our application. In general, the proposed project would improve the site distances at the driveway and improve the condition at this intersection. Despite the improvement, the proposed driveway does not fully meet the city's site distance requirements. In order to meet these requirements outlined really in the Nashville Land Use Code, sightline easements are needed from the abutting property to the south and a small section of Greeley Park to the north. The applicant here tonight is in the process of seeking such easements regardless of which, regardless of whether the easements are obtained, we believe in the analysis shows that the proposed project will result in a significant improvement compared to the existing condition, not only for vehicles accessing the site, but also for vehicles traveling along this corridor. As Attorney Pearlman previously mentioned, the project team did have a chance to meet with city engineer Dan Hudson and traffic engineer Wayne Husband earlier, a couple weeks ago. Both engineers really recognized the challenges of the intersection. They noted that the proposed project, a two-lot, single-family subdivision, would really be a low-volume traffic generator and they also recognized that the project would drastically improve the existing condition at this site and at this intersection. Happy to answer any questions when, when our presentation's done, but I'll turn it back over to Attorney Pearlman.
Mr. Chairman, you folks know me, I'm happy to answer any questions at, at any time. To run through the variance criteria, I'll confess to you that my, my threshold issue is I forgot my glasses, so bear with me. We do not believe this application is contrary to public interest. When this application was, when this site was before this board in 2017, the neighbors spoke about, and board members spoke about that the proposal for seven condo units was not in character. The neighborhood, the RA zone, encouraged single-family homes on single-family lots. Well, that's what we have here tonight. We have two single-family homes and two single-family lots. We believe that we're in the character of the neighborhood, we're not going to be affecting any public rights or any adverse to, anything adverse to public health or safety. Similarly, we believe that we're in spirit of the ordinance because although we don't quite meet the, the lot width variance, our lots are not overcrowded, there's plenty of room on the site for two homes, there'll be plenty of room around the site for two families. The driveway area where the lot width is short, is really not a backyard or playground or play area for kids or anything, it's just really to access for the cars to come and go. We believe substantial justice will be done with this site. The site has been idle for as long as I can remember and the owners are looking to make it better, tear down all the junk that you see on the site, approve the, remove all that vegetation, put in two homes, two additional homes for our city, and we believe we're going to be improving the site distance issues, which will be a benefit to, to all parties. With respect to the, the valuation, again, I would have you turn to, take a look at or consider Mr. Trammell's report where he says there'll be no adverse impact to property values because of the nature of these properties, that homes are going to begin, these will be relatively high-end homes, where they expect that it'll bring up property value all around the neighborhood, along with the increased site distances of benefit to all, according to Mr. Trammell. Finally, the hardship, as I outlined at the outset, is this unique shape of this lot, not quite a rectangle, it's got that jog right, right, about a third of the way in, which creates the shortage of the lot width. We believe we have a reasonable proposal of being a residential use in a residential district and we believe there's no fair and substantial relationship or reason to deny the requested use with respect to the lot width variance. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Lionel?
Yeah. Regarding the site distance easement to the south in particular, so I understand, and the testimony is so far, is that an easement has been requested of the homeowner at 71 Manchester and has not been received. According to the memo here, the request is to remove that mature tree on the property of 71 Manchester Street. And I, I'm very familiar with this property because I walk by it frequently.
Sure.
And my, my opinion is that removal of the tree is not necessary, maybe trimming some of the lower branches, but I would be really distressed if that beautiful tree were, were removed just to provide additional site distance. Do you have a comment on that?
Well, the, the goal is to minimize the cutting, so you have to balance the two. You have to balance the site distance needs for the drivers and you want to, you know, balance the need of the homeowners, not only for our neighbor at 71 Manchester in the south, but also for, you know, the homeowners who are going to be living on this site. So I was talking with the engineers today and so their, their plan is to limb up as best they can. Rather than take down a tree, all right, they can cut the under, the lower branches of a tree to create that size distance. So I agree with you, I would like to see as, as few as possible. That tree is in the public right of way.
Not unusual.
Right. And I'm sure most folks think, like, like, like I did, owning a house, you own to the street. Well, you don't quite own to the street, but, you know, so the goal is to minimize that tree cutting to preserve, you know, the trees that are there, but at the same time, you know, address the site distance issues.
Okay.
But the, but the, but the comment from Mr. Thornton of Vaness, his, his, his comment in his memo saying, whether we get the easements or not, we're still making a vast improvement to this, to this bend in Manchester Street, just by what we're doing on our, on our site alone.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Other questions from the board?
Thank you very much. Oh, sure.
Actually, yeah. One thing I was just kind of curious about, I was trying to decipher things on the plan, that so-called it's parcel A, which is really a triangular piece that kind of is part of what you were talking about, that it, it looks like when I look at the GIS map, it looks like it's part of, I think, again, 71 Manchester Street, but there seemed like there was some notation that called into question perhaps even like what the ownership of that, it was like in note six and I, you know, I'm trying to look at the fine print and it was just, plus I wasn't sure how ultimately germane it is because in one sense, it looks like that's still back behind and I realize it might be part of what's, what's causing the, the issue generally, but I just was wondering if you could speak a little bit about what the nature of that parcel is.
It's a very good question and it's one of these small parcels that we have scattered throughout the city where title, ownership of that, title to that is very confusing. It was, it was created, I believe in around 1906 and then we can't follow the deeds going forward into whoever owns it. I think our neighbor, Mr. Nolan, probably owns it by adverse possession at this point because he's been using it, he's going to fence on it and I would, I would encourage him to go for it, right? But we took the position that that's going to be too expensive and too long to figure out, to add to the equation. So the short answer is we couldn't figure out the title between the surveying team and Haner Swanson, the work that I was doing, we just, it was kind of backed off after a while.
And is it fair to say that even ultimately that property still wouldn't give the relief you need to be able to make a conforming lot width?
You're correct because you measured the lot width at the setback.
Right. So it's still behind it, right?
Right. But it does create an odd-shaped lot, just by having that whole triangle in parcel A. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, sorry, just I want to make sure, Ms. Boris, did you have any questions?
[inaudible].
Oh, she's back off.
Okay.
I don't see her anymore. Okay. All right, thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to speak in favor of the application at 75 Manchester Street? Is there anybody on Zoom that would like to speak in favor of 75 Manchester Street? Okay, so it looks like we covered that. Is there anybody that is in the audience that would like to speak with questions, concerns or opposition to 75 Manchester Street? Feel free to step forward to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Matthew K., 19 Menadnock Street. So my other question I have, listen to the, well, I'm sorry, I forget your name, sir, is who doesn't think that kids are going to play in the driveway? I know most kids, when they ride their bike, they're riding in their riding vehicles, are going to be playing in that driveway. I just want to understand how that spin is coming across as it's not a play area, it's not any dangerous to the kids when I know as a child, you know, the neighbors' kids are always playing in their driveway.
All right, we can, we can, the applicant can, can address that.
At the end.
At the end, yeah. It's, I think I saw somebody else raise, feel free, you can come on up and.
My name is Stephanie Dion and I've been 17.
You can lower that, maybe lower that a little bit just to.
On the shorter side. My name is Stephanie Dion, 17 Menadnock Street, neighbor with Matt that just spoke and I about the plan here. When I moved here, the reason that I bought my house, exactly where I bought it, after I looked at like 15 houses, was my realtor came down to City Hall and asked the question, is this a single-family lot? Yes, it is a single-family lot, it's 75 Manchester Street. So I said, well, this is the house I'm going to get because I have a nice view, you know, and if someone builds, they probably won't build all the way up here. Now we're, now we're saying that this single-family lot is actually a two-family lot, two-house lot. So to the people that, and my neighbor did the same exact thing, he moved in after me and found out the same thing, he moved right beside me. And now we're sitting here saying, well, let's put two. I understand that they're in, they're businessmen and they're looking to make a lot of money, but I don't know if any of you live on Manchester Street or around. Honestly, it's like the autobahn in Germany. They literally drive, come around that corner on the wrong side of the street, driving so fast and it's absolutely sinful because I'm surprised somebody has not been killed yet. There's walkers, there's dogs, there's children and there's, you know, homes that are going to, like, my neighbor Matt that just spoke, he's directly on the corner, him trying to get in and out of his driveway and now we're putting more traffic on that terrible turn. And I'm not sure who thinks that you can see 200, 200 yards down the street on that corner, that's insane. And with all respect to the attorney, to all of you here and to the owner, I don't believe that you should take care of your property after you get the variance, say, go ahead and build. You can clean up the overgrown vegetation now because it's, it, like, you can't even walk by. My, my mother is 84 years old and likes to walk to Greeley, she's so afraid to walk on that turn because it's so overgrown. So those are some.
Hang on one second, just like, make sure the board doesn't have any questions for you. Okay, you're fine, thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak with questions, concerns or opposition that's here in the audience? Come on up.
I just have.
Wait, state your name and address first.
Cindy Sainte-Mont, 6 Blue Jay Hill, Nashua. And the only thing I want to say is he had said that Charlotte Ave's a school there in that area, that Charlotte Ave is Penachak and Mount Pleasant, they're, and St. Christopher's, there's a lot of schools there, children are always walking back and forth and as she said, it is extremely dangerous. When I'm coming around the corner to take a left onto Menadnock, I kind of like hold my breath and hope there are no cars coming ahead of me so I could hurry up and turn so I don't get hit from behind. If you go and drive by there, I don't know if any of you have, it is really a dangerous, dangerous, dangerous corner, so just wanted to say that.
Thank you. Anybody else with questions, concerns or opposition? Is there anybody on Zoom with questions, concerns or opposition?
We have one.
Okay. Please go ahead and you can unmute and state your name and address and ask your question.
Yeah, good afternoon, my name's George Sainte-Mont. I live at 6 Blue Jay Hill on the, on Rariputter and I was, I actually had the opportunity to, to have an opportunity to talk to a gentleman back in 2016, or 2017, the last time this lot came up for discussion. I mean, the subdivided, we all understand someday the lot will be developed and hopefully done in, in good taste, done with hopefully one property, but the, the challenges are with the multiple developments, multiple properties, the one thing to touch upon, if it becomes a private roadway, does it have to get private trash collection? Are they going to get large trucks in and out of there? I don't know. I mean, this was the same part of discussion the last time, so it is, it's part of the discussion. So it is, part of the discussion from twenty seventeen to now has not changed. If an emergency vehicle has to get up in there, are provisions in there for a fire truck or something else to get in and out of there safely? I don't know. I mean, those are things that I still think about, as well as much as my kids are older now. You know, I always worry, even I ride bikes, I walk. I always worry about that corner because it is a tapered sidewalk. It is not a very wide sidewalk. And those improvements are not even being considered as well. I mean, two people walking in breath, it's not possible. It's just not that wide a space. And cars actually traverse probably no more than one or two feet away from you, so. I just don't, I just don't see the merit of developing that lot considering, you know, with multiple properties. If they're going to develop and make it one single-family RA, I'd be all for it. I'd actually help the, you know, I'd be all for that. I don't see, I don't see the benefit of expanding it and making this two lots. The other challenge I also see is if you develop the lots and subdivide it, what's to say they sell the second lot first, deep inside the property, and never remove the old structures, waiting for revenue from the development of that one property to continue the development of the second house? I just don't feel that confidence, you know? Like I said, if you're going to rip it all down and do it all in one shot and prove, hey, we can do this, I just don't feel that workflow. But thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the board? All right, I think that does it for, well, is there anybody else on Zoom with questions, concerns, or opposition? Okay, seeing none. Attorney Promon, oh, I'm sorry, we, well, yeah, just procedurally, we were done with on the audience. But go ahead, let's come on up. Again, so like the others, please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm James Battle. I'm living on fifty Manadok Street. Just according to the plan, the proposed plan, I'm right behind the second house that, you know, what they proposed to. But that's what a former guy just said, that getting big trucks in there and to back out again, like the fire trucks or the garbage trucks, if they have a private garbage disposal system or what. But the thing is that what he said about the curve, when you, when I'm coming out of that street, try to make a left turn, you can't see nothing coming from that. And people don't drive twenty-eight miles an hour. They're coming around the corner about fifty miles an hour. And that's very dangerous. So all those things, you can't see this, Mr. Bruce, trees are in front of the yard. You can't see down to your right, you know? And another thing I want to ask, if this proposal is being approved, what about blasting? Because there are rocks over there. I can dig a hole in my yard because I tried to plant a cherry tree there. I have to move the tree four or five times before I can find a spot. Every time I dig about one feet, rocks over there. So where that second building is going to be, there's a lot of rocks over there because the lot goes from top to the bottom. The only part is from the half of that lot to the front is kind of flat. And drilling, my neighbor has a big rock in her basement that will be never removed. So that means there's big boulders down in the ground. So for blasting, I know there's a five hundred feet, you know, but you can do the blasting. But the house is about not even fifty or sixty feet from my house to, if they have to dig out for a basement. So I don't know if they're going to put a basement in that house or the existing basement in the front, what they're going to do. So we don't have everything yet to see what's going to happen over there, you know? So think about it, you know? It's also a kind of safety issue around the corner. Speed bumps, I don't know if that's going to work. Because in my street, when people come around the corner, they speed up from right around the corner. They go up about fifty miles an hour through Monadok Street, all the way to Resort Street. So I'm sitting on my porch and I see people driving around very fast. So all those things play kind of role over there. So think about it and then come go from there.
Any questions from the board? Thank you for your testimony. Is there anybody else in the audience that wanted to speak with questions, concerns, or opposition? I think Attorney Promon, if you want to come back up. Also, if the board could indulge me and I'll even open it back up if there's a counter testimony. There was a question I wanted to ask during the original testimony, so if it, if you can bear with me. So one of the things that I kind of wanted to explore earlier, and I just knew there was something I couldn't think of at the time, was, was there any evaluation for how having the driveway put pretty much to the north side of the property, did that, it seems like that must not do anything to improve, perhaps it even worsens sightlines. But I just, I didn't, I wanted to kind of make sure that we heard about that, if it made some difference and if that was specifically why things are proposed the way they are.
Yeah, so I...
Sorry, can you just name an address?
Ethan Beals, project manager, Hainer Swanson, Three Congress Street here in Nashua. As I mentioned earlier, the initial driveway was actually a little bit in a different location. And so, again, not to pick out different locations for potential driveways, but the current driveway location that we're showing has really been optimized for maximum sight distance, regardless of easements on abutting properties. It was really something that the traffic engineer, Scott Thornton, took a look at. And then we adjusted the driveway to its current location to maximize those sight distance and safe stopping distance for traffic already existing on Manchester Street.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Mr. Chairman, again, Eddie Promon, for the record. We looked at all options. We looked at putting the driveway, abutting Greeley Park in the north end of the site. But then that creates, it kind of worsens the traffic as you're coming northbound on Manchester. So working with Hainer Swanson, our traffic engineer, we believe we have the driveway location, the best possible location. But let me just try and answer a few questions. There's an initial question about kids playing in the driveway. Of course, kids play in the driveway. My only point was that where the lot width is at the setback for this site, you know, kids may well be playing in the driveway, but given the big yard that the one oh six B is going to have, where the kids more apt to be in the yard than rather right on the driveway on Manchester Street. But obviously, kids play in the driveway, we know that. There was a comment about the broker said this is a single-family lot. Well, that's not true. If you look at this site, there are five buildings on this lot. We believe that it was approved for five units on this lot. Richard Mayner, a couple of years ago, tried to say it was like seven or eight units. And Mr. Falk said that's not true, but we're confident we have at least five units that would be allowed, so. And when this was back before you in two thousand seventeen, again, Richard Mayner was going for seven units. And there was some discussion, well, maybe five or six would be okay. Now we're down to two, and we're still getting the same objections. We believe we have a good proposal before you tonight. And again, remember that we're just here for the lot width issue. Now, we recognize the safety concerns. You know, I've driven Manchester Street my entire life. I've taken this corner too fast. But what we're proposing to knock down and improve on this site, we believe we're going to be making the entire area that much better. There's a comment about sidewalks. If you look at the plans and as you go through the planning board process, we have to widen sidewalks. We have to bring the sidewalks up to code or up to city standards, and they're not today. And if you look at the plans themselves, you can see that we're giving up some of our land to widen the sidewalks and improve the sidewalks in front of our property. Public trash pickup, this will be just like any other home in Nashua. The homeowners have to bring the barrels down to Manchester Street. Fire trucks, large fire trucks don't pull into driveways, large fire trucks stay out in the seat. Smaller ambulances, smaller trucks pull into driveways. We don't see that we're going to have any large truck public access. The construction process itself will naturally take down everything that you see just to access the site. You know what I mean? Like, there was a comment, what if the back house gets built first and the front doesn't get torn down? Well, just the natural process of construction will clear the site in the front and create a house lot in the back. And so we're not concerned that, you know, part of the process will be improving the sight distance by taking down buildings, taking down shrubberies and trees and whatnot to improve the sight distance. And finally, there's a question about blasting. Blasting, as this board may know, is regulated by the fire department. Blasting contractors are well aware of the strict regulations that they have to abide by. Often, they do pre-blaster surveys of the neighborhood to see if there's going to be any potential impact. And I've dealt with blasting over the years, and these folks, main drilling and blasting, for example, these folks know what they're doing. So again, we're just here for a lot with variance. We believe we met the criteria. And again, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Questions from the board? Mr. Neely?
Attorney Promon, what I was hearing from some of the folks in the crowd, specifically from Manadok Street, is they purchase their houses, they have a great view of woods behind them. When this project is complete, what is going to be between these folks and especially the back house there? Is there a plan to have a line of trees? You know, really, what it comes down to is they don't want to be staring at somebody's yard, and they don't want to be stared at. Is there a plan there?
And likewise, that homeowner doesn't want to be, you know, looking into their backyards and the back of their homes. So we don't have a landscaping plan at this point, but the goal is to maintain as much buffer as possible. And likewise, if the board would think a six-foot fence would be appropriate, you know, behind, along that boundary with Manadok, the back lots of the Manadok lots, that's fine. But, you know, but we can address all those things either at the planning board or we can make a condition here, right? But our intent, that home, the back lot on one oh six B, I mean, look at that lot. It's a large lot in an inner city. That's going to be a high-end home. They're going to want as much buffer for them, for themselves, as the folks in Manadok do. So it's kind of mutually advantageous to maintain as much vegetation or fencing as possible.
Any other questions? All right, I think we're all set. So, thank you, Attorney Promon. So for those of you that did testify with questions, concerns, or opposition, only one of you can come back up. Nobody actually has to come back up, but if one of you wants to come back or if you want to quickly confer as far as which one to select, it's really kind of, it's up to you folks how you want to handle that. And again, if nobody wants to come back up, that's fine as well. Okay, it looks like everybody's set, so I think we'll close the public hearing here, and I'll open the public meeting. Mr. Neely, your thoughts about the case?
I'm in favor of this application. As Attorney Promon just spoke to in his closing statements there, I don't think it's reasonable to expect to keep an oversized wooded lot in the middle of the city when we have a housing shortage. I do like the plan they put forward here. I actually am pretty excited that we're going to be cleaning up a blighted property there. You know, five dilapidated buildings with terrible sightlines. I see this as a huge upgrade in the value of that area. Thank you for the very complete application. Keller Williams spoke to the fact that they expect all of the property values to rise once these houses are added in there. Great job on the traffic survey. We all know that's a tough corner. You know, it's going to take a concerted effort to work together to work on the traffic safety. I'm pretty excited they're going to be adding to the width of the sidewalks over there. So for those reasons, I'm in favor of this application.
Thank you. Mr. Minkara, your thoughts?
I'm also in favor of this application. I do appreciate that the neighbors are currently enjoying views of open land. But end of the day, this parcel is unusually large for this area, and it, just in terms of density, would be capable of supporting several more homes. I think it's been noted historically that were multiple residents on this property. I walk by here almost every day, so I'm very, very well aware of the hazards of the curb. And I do think that removing these dilapidated buildings, cutting back the vegetation, expanding the sidewalk are going to greatly improve safety in the area. And would also note that, in my view, the buildings themselves are a safety hazard, and they're getting worse. So I do support the variance, and I think so'll be a vast improvement over current conditions.
Thank you. Mr. Boucher?
I also support the variance of the reasons spoken to. Again, appreciate the issues that exist on Manchester Street. I do believe that in addition of an additional home, as much as it may be understood or looked at differently, I don't think exacerbates the problem that already exists. So I think, again, you know, it's an enforcement issue in that area. And that's not to downplay the safety issues, but again, I think that with the improvements to the lot, that will be solved. And again, I also agree that the impact on this lot, what's proposed, is much less than what was proposed before. So again, I think it's a good plan, and I think that they have met all the criteria for this application.
Thank you. Mr. Lionel?
Yeah, this is my neighborhood, and I'm very familiar with that property. I've walked by it many, many, many times. I drive by it many, many times. I believe that this, what the proposal here is a dramatic improvement to what's there now. It will improve safety for drivers, for walkers. I think that it will definitely improve property values. Yeah, it's terrible. You buy a house and there's undeveloped land behind it, and then somebody develops it. Unfortunately, that happens. It's happened to me before. It's happened to lots of people. But the proposal here is much better than what we saw in two thousand seventeen. I remember that one. And I believe that it is a, it will be a great benefit to the neighborhood, and I would approve this proposal.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm likewise in favor. In fact, I was the one that made the motion in two thousand seventeen and part of the unanimous denial of that proposal then because I think we all had a lot of concerns about the intensity of use. I think with this, I'm going to probably repeat some of the points I've already made, but with this very large parcel, having it divided into two functional lots that only have this lot with relief is a very reasonable proposal. The intensity still remains relatively low. I think, you know, probably for lots of reasons, I think some of the concerns that are there as far as buffer and impact on some of those adjacent properties, I think for everybody's, you know, ultimate benefit, I think there will probably be very limited impact. And I appreciate that overall, I think, we're going to still have a much safer result of this property getting developed in this relatively low-density way. So I think the criteria has been met. I think the lot has some unique characteristics to it, as has been testified to. So I'm definitely in support. Would somebody like to make a motion for this case? Thank you, Mr. Lionel?
I'd like to make a motion on behalf of owner Carmen Capone and David Dubois. Address seventy-five Manchester Street. The applicant is seventy-five Manchester Street LLC. This is for sheet sixty-five, lot one oh six, requesting variance from land use code section one ninety dash sixteen, table sixteen dash three, for a minimum lot width. Seventy-five feet required, fifty-two feet proposed to subdivide one lot into two lots, each containing a single-family home. This is in the RE zone, Ward three. The board finds that this variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property. Given the special conditions of the property, it's a large oddly-shaped lot, and the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the variance. We have a request for a minimum lot width for one of the two lots. The second lot will conform to all of the regulations, and the second one will need only the variance for lot width at the setback level. The board believes this is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. We have testimony, professional testimony, that it will not adversely affect the property values of surrounding parcels. The board believes that is not contrary to public interest. We believe that the improvements will actually benefit public interest, and the board finds that substantial justice would be served. So I make a motion to approve this area variance.
Thank you. And Mr. Neely?
Oh, sorry.
Mr. Neely, second? Any other discussion on the...
Who's second?
Mr. Neely. It was a close... Mr. Minkara, how do you vote?
Mr. Minkara votes in favor.
Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Lionel, how do you vote?
Mr. Lionel votes in favor.
Mr. Neely, how do you vote?
Mr. Neely votes in favor.
And Mr. Shaw votes in favor. That passes unanimously, five-zero. As kind of stated in the introductory remarks, any case, and certainly Attorney Promon and the applicant know this well also, they have been approved to move forward, but within the next thirty days, somebody could file a rehearing request, an appeal regarding our decision. And it would be possible that that could halt the effort going forward. But if you have any questions, you can contact Mr. Falk. But if you have any questions, you can contact Mr. Falk and Ms. Poirier in the Planning Department about that process. So, thank you for your time, and good luck with your project. And if you could, if you're going to have conversation, just step out into the hallway and... I think Attorney Pearlman's got the door for us. Thank you. We'll go ahead and move to case number two. The owners are Stephen J., sorry, Stephen G. Florio and Eric A. Ruger. The address is 3 Minto Way, Sheet F, Lot 1661. The request is for variance from Land Use Code Section 190-31 to encroach 1 foot 8 inches into the 6-foot required side yard setback to install a 7-foot by 7-foot hot tub. This is in the R9 zone, Ward 5. And it looks like we have somebody at the podium. If you could state your name and address for the record and proceed with your testimony.
I'm Eric Ruger, 3 Minto Way, Nashua.
Please speak up, sir. Yeah, you have to speak up a little bit. Sorry, yeah.
Eric Ruger, 3 Minto Way, Nashua.
Thank you.
Seeking approval for a minor encroachment of 1 foot 8 inches to the rear setback to accommodate the placement of a hot tub. I don't believe that it's contrary to any public interest. It would not be visible from outside the property. It would be safely secured within a fenced-in yard, and it should have no impact on any of the values of surrounding properties. The property line we're seeking to encroach upon is opposite in open space, so it wouldn't impact any neighbors, and it wouldn't change the character of the neighborhood. The proposed placement is the only private and safe option that we have. It's close to the door for safer year-round access. The builder of our development sold us a floor plan that ended up being too big to sit where it would normally sit within the envelope, and they had to push it back. By the time we found out that that was the case, it was too late for us to back out. So, we have a very small backyard, and we're just trying to make the best of it. And the only place on the property that we would be able to stay fully outside of the setbacks would be on the inside corner. That would significantly increase the costs of hardscaping, electrical work. It would lack privacy, because it would be on the side where the neighbors actually are, and it would require a significant amount of shoveling in the winter to be able to have year-round access to it. So, I think that covers everything. If you have any questions?
All right, thank you. Any questions from the board? Very straightforward. Thank you for your application. We'll see if anybody has any other testimony. Is there anybody that would like to speak in favor of the application here in the audience for 3 Minto Way? Seeing none. Anybody on Zoom that would like to speak in favor of this application? Seeing none. Anybody that is in the audience that would like to speak regarding any questions, concerns, or opposition to this 3 Minto Way application? Seeing none. Any on Zoom with any questions, concerns, or opposition? Okay, I will close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Boucher, your thoughts?
I'm in favor of the application. There are several special conditions of this property, one being that's a corner lot. We have two side, two front setbacks. The, again, to the testimony of the applicant, the house size was already predetermined, so the only place to put this house was to have to push it back, because then it would have been a variance needed for that application. And, again, also, to make this, in my mind, that, you know, the neighbor and the rear is a cemetery, right? So, there's no impact to me as to the rear neighbor. And again, I would not expect anybody to put a hot tub on their front lawn. It's not the place to put it. You know, and then, like I said, the other side of the home, again, it's not practical. You know, there's got to be some, there's some reasonable privacy that I think should be afforded. So, again, because of the odd-shaped lot and the building and the envelope size, I'm going to be in favor of the application.
All right, thank you. Mr. Lionel, your thoughts?
I'm in favor of the application for the reasons Mr. Boucher stated.
Mr. Neely?
I'm also in favor of the application for the reasons as stated by Mr. Boucher. In addition, we do have several letters from neighbors who are in favor of this as well. So, for those reasons, I'm in favor of this application.
Yeah, thank you for noting that. I should have noted that for the record, that we did have that written testimony in favor. So, that will be included in the case file. Mr. Mincara, your thoughts?
I'm also in favor for the reasons stated, and just would add, what's proposed is really a fairly conventional and reasonable use.
All right, thank you. I'm in support as well for the reasons stated. I don't think I have anything to add. So, would anybody like to make a motion regarding this application?
I'll make it. I'd like to make a motion to grant the variance for Stephen Florio and Eric Ruger, owners at 3 Minto Way, requesting a variance from Land Use Code Section 190-31 to encroach 1 foot 8 inches into the 6-foot required yard setback to install a 7-by-7 hot tub in the R9 zone, Ward 5, zoning district R9. We find that the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property, namely, the location of the house on the lot, the fact that it's a corner lot, somewhat unusually sized, and that there really is no other reasonable alternative, you know, location for the hot tub, and that we find that what is proposed is a reasonable use. We find that it is within the spirit and the intent of the ordinance, that it will not adversely affect the property values of surrounding properties, mainly because behind it is an open space parcel cemetery. We also do have letters from abutters indicating their support. It would not be contrary to the public interest, and substantial justice would be done.
Mr. Neely, seconded. Thank you. Any other discussion on the motion? Mr. Lionel, how do you vote?
Mr. Lionel votes in favor.
Mr. Neely, how do you vote?
Mr. Neely votes in favor.
Mr. Mincara?
Mr. Mincara votes in favor.
And Mr. Boucher?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
And Mr. Shaw votes in favor. That passes unanimously, 5-0. There is that 30-day window of appeal. Seems highly unlikely. If you have any questions, you can certainly contact the Planning Department, and Ms. Poirier or Mr. Falk can help you out with any questions you might have, but good luck with your project. All right. We'll move on to case number three. It is, I'll read it into the record. It's Nashua Housing Authority, the owner, Jason Perillo, Pablocky, sorry, Sign Company, is the applicant. The address is 41 Central Street, Sheet 80, Lot 89. The request is for a variance from Land Use Code Section 190-101, Table 101-7, for the following two items: to exceed maximum number of ground signs per premise where one is permitted and two are requested; and, secondly, to exceed the maximum ground sign area where 10 square feet is permitted, 18 square feet is proposed per sign, for a total of 36 square feet. This is in the RC zone in Ward 4. Is there somebody here to present this case? I think you're on Zoom. Okay, welcome. If you could state your name and address for the record, and we can proceed.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm Jason Perillo with Pablocky Sign Company, 4 Industrial Park Road in Midway, Massachusetts. We're here tonight to propose two granite monument signs for the Bronstein Housing Project. These signs are 18 square feet, and they would be located at the Central Street entrance to the property and also the Pine Street entrance. The reason why we're asking for two is this is a large property with multiple buildings, and having a sign at each entrance will greatly benefit the public by directing people to the entrances and also reduce the amount of traffic going through the intersection. The signs are made of granite, and then they have a, they are chiseled away for the lettering, and that's filled with black paint. So, the signs are very simple. They are externally illuminated with an LED sign strip that would shine straight up at the sign, won't create a lot of ambient lighting. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions from the board? I don't think there are any. Thank you, sir, for your testimony. Anybody in the audience like to speak in favor of this application? Anybody, seeing none. Anybody on Zoom? Actually, at this point, we have nobody other than the applicant, so I'm not even going to bother with any more Zoom questions. And I think you're not here for opposition or questions or concern, so we only have a couple other folks. So, we'll close the public hearing, open the public meeting. Let's see. Mr. Neely, your thoughts?
I'm in favor of this application, as they stated. Where these two signs will be located cannot be seen at the same time. It's obviously a large development, several buildings, several large buildings, so the signage will not be out of character. You know, they won't look abnormally large next to a smaller building. Like, these are large-size developments, certainly not out of character to the neighborhood there. So, for those reasons, I'm in favor of this application.
Thank you. Mr. Mincara, your thoughts?
I also support the application, I think, for the reasons stated, you know, providing direction into the site, I think, is necessary, and, you know, certainly in the public interest from a safety perspective. And also, just to note, as I think we have in the past, that although it is an RC zone, it really has a lot more in common with the mill yard area behind it. It's much more commercial-industrial in nature.
Thank you. Mr. Boucher?
I'm going to support the application for all the reasons spoken.
Mr. Lionel?
I'm also in support.
Thank you. I'm likewise in support. I mean, I think the signs look like they'll be very aesthetic, very nicely done. I think the scale of these buildings, I was just down there today, and kind of was like, wow, yeah, they've really come a long way. They're just about ready for occupancy, and but I think a couple signs like this, who are, you know, they're very, still going to be relatively very small for the site, but I think it's very important from that directional aspect, that identification aspect of the property. I even, almost thinking, like, I wonder if two signs is technically even enough, but I think hopefully that that was considered by the applicant, but I think it'll go a long way to helping folks find their way there. So, yeah, definitely in support. Would somebody like to make a motion? Thank you, Mr. Lionel?
I'd like to make a motion on behalf of the Nashua Housing Authority. The applicant is Jason Perillo, Pablocky Sign Company, address 41 Central Street, Sheet 80, Lot 89, requesting the following variances from Land Use Code Section 190-101, Table 101-7. First, to exceed maximum number of ground signs per premise, one permitted, two requested; and two, to exceed maximum ground sign area, 10 square feet permitted, 18 square feet proposed per sign for up to 36 square feet. This is in the RC zone, Ward 4. The board believes this variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property. This is a large complex accessed from two different streets. Therefore, a sign on each street entrance is necessary to guide people into the property. The benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the variance. The board believes this is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. It will not adversely affect the property values of surrounding parcels. It's a very tasteful sign in keeping with the new buildings. It is not contrary to public interest, and substantial justice would be served. So, I make a motion to approve this area variance.
Mr. Neely, thank you for your second. Any other discussion on the motion? Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Lionel, how do you vote?
Mr. Lionel votes in favor.
Mr. Mincara, how do you vote?
Mr. Mincara votes in favor.
Mr. Neely?
Mr. Neely votes in favor.
And Mr. Shaw votes in favor. That passes 5-0 unanimously. Good luck with the signs. As noted before, there is that 30-day window of appeal. It seems highly unlikely that anything would happen there. If you have any questions, you can certainly contact the Planning Department, Mr. Falk and Ms. Poirier. Good luck with the...
Thank you very much. Good evening. Have a good night.
Have a good night. Thank you. And we have one more case for the evening, case number four. I'll read that into the record. The owner is Peter Sikaris. The address is 25 Arlington Street, Sheet 27, Lot 19. The request is for the following variances from Land Use Code, Section 190-108, Section C, subsection 8. Firstly, to exceed maximum number of wall signs, one is permitted, two are requested; and, secondly, to exceed maximum wall sign area where 6 square feet is permitted, a total of 79 square feet is proposed. This is in the RB zone, Ward 7. Is there somebody here to present this application? You can state your name and address for the record.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. My name is Manuel Flores, 136 Kimble Street. I'm the tenant for the site. I request my application for, just replace the banner on the existing sign on the building. Just, we are, I'm the tenant and the owner for the new convenience store and the little restaurant, just a cop, and just request about the premise for them. We want to replace just the banner, because all the metal system placed is keeping the same size, keeping the same height, just replace the banner.
All right. Questions from the board? Mr. Neely?
There's currently, I believe that's an unused sign. It kind of says Pepsi or something like that. It faces Arlington Street. Is that coming down?
The old one is for the last restaurant on that place, because a few years ago, that place was the restaurant, but the last tenant, he closed for any reason. Now, the building, that side of the building, what that one closed for, like, four or five years closed. Last tenant before me, he start the process, and he want to open the convenience store with the restaurant, but he never, he never opened for four years. I take the place, and now for the old banner, it's for the last restaurant, for the Subway pizzas, something like that.
But the sign, I think, says Pepsi on it, says RJ's or something like that?
No, it's for my personal color, the custom color. It's not Pepsi, it's not restaurant. It's not Coca-Cola. It's the personal, it's the custom banner.
But the one that's there now, so I understand what you're looking to build. I get that, the one that says Mateos. But right now, there's a sign higher than where Mateos is going to be. It looks like it's an old sign. Is that coming down?
Yeah, the old sign, but that one's coming out.
It is coming out.
Yeah, that one's coming out, and, you know, we'll replace it.
Great.
Just coming out.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Other questions from the board? It looked like that this, there's been various versions of these awnings at this location, you know, going back, there were multiple timeframes. So, I think, is that part, that's part of your testimony, that there have been awning signs?
Yeah, the reason we request for the new banner, because it's very important for the business, because it's the face on the business. You know, so, it's a new banner, looks much better for the people pass by. They can see we are now, we are open, we got the restaurant there, or the convenience store. So, now, on this point, I have one of my neighborhood, the people in the area, they are very happy to open the new business, close for the school, close for the shares. So, that one there is.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
I think we're all set for questions from the board. Okay, you can have a seat.
Thank you.
Sir, would you like to speak in favor of this application? Okay, all right. So, we don't have anybody else in the audience or on Zoom, so we will close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Mincara, your thoughts?
Yeah, I support the application. I think, I mean, they're really just replacing the banner. There seems to have been awnings there historically of the same size and proportion. Clearly, it's a commercial use, although it's a residential district. I think it's been a commercial use for probably as long as anyone can remember, so I support the application.
All right, thank you. Mr. Lionel, your thoughts?
I also support the application for the same reasons.
Mr. Boucher?
I also support the application. The only thing I would notice, whether or not anybody would want to, out of stipulation, to make sure the old sign is removed, but, again, I'm supporting the application for what it is here. I just didn't know if it made a difference anyway.
Yeah, we heard it by testimony that that's the plan, so I think it probably isn't necessary. Mr. Neely, your thoughts?
Yeah, I'm also in favor of the application for what has been stated by my colleagues. I also, the reason I ask the questions, I'd like to see that sign come down, so if we want to make it a caveat, fine. If we're comfortable it's going to come down, I'm fine with that as well. I just don't think we need conflicting signage out there.
All right, thank you. And I'm also in favor. I mean, in many ways, I feel like these awnings over these kind of convenience stores in these kinds of neighborhoods, it's just a very common classical look. It's like, I think it's almost an expected kind of thing, so it's, to me, it's not present something that's kind of counter to the feel of the neighborhood. It's actually part of, like, the vibe and the feel of the neighborhood. So, I think it's, and the fact that there's been this kind of existing kind of usage through, you know, probably a couple decades or longer. you know, probably a couple decades or longer, I see no concerns with it. So would anybody like to make a motion?
I'll make it.
All right, thank you, Mr. Maccar.
I'd like to make a motion to grant the variance for Peter Sikaris, owner of twenty-five Arlington Street, requesting the following variances from land use code section one ninety, one oh eight, C eight. One, to exceed the maximum number of wall signs, one permitted, two requested, and two, to exceed the maximum wall sign area, six square feet permitted, a total of seventy-nine square feet proposed in the RB zone, Ward seven, zoning district RC. We find that the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property, namely, that this property has historically been used as a commercial use in a residential zone, and that historically there has been an awning on the property. So really, the only request is to replace the banner that's already there, which is certainly a reasonable use, given the nature of the business. And there is no other way. The applicant can seek the benefit, seeking which is recognition of the name of the store. We find that it is within the spirit and the intent of the ordinance, that it will not adversely affect property value, values of surrounding properties. In fact, we've heard no testimony for opposition. I believe we've had no written opposition either. We find that it's not contrary to the public interest to identify the business that's currently open, and that substantial justice would be done.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Lionel, for your second. All right. Any other discussion on the motion? Mr. Lionel, how do you vote?
Mr. Lionel votes in favor.
Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Maccar?
Mr. Maccar votes in favor.
Mr. Neely?
Mr. Neely votes in favor.
And Mr. Shaw votes in favor. That passes unanimously, five zero. Again, there is that thirty-day window of appeal. It seems highly unlikely. You certainly can can ask questions of Ms. Poyer or Mr. Falk if you have any questions, but good luck with your your project.
Thank you for sharing. Have a good night.
Thank you. All right, and then we have our last parts of business. We have no motions for rehearing to consider, and I believe we're three weeks out from the next zoning. Plus, a special note, that meeting will be on Wednesday, September thirteenth, because the local municipal election is Tuesday, September twelfth. So just for anybody that happens to still be watching us, and for those of us here, obviously, in attendance, of the somewhat unusual but somewhat, you know, regular occurrence where we do shift out due to an election. So we will meet that Wednesday. But again, it's too soon for that agenda. Staff usually sends that out to us ahead of time anyhow. So certainly, if there's any concerns about regional impact, we can, you know, that'll be identified, and we can cover it then. But we tend to have those so so infrequently, that's usually not a concern. We do have one set of minutes from our last meeting of August eighth, twenty twenty-three. Did everybody have a chance to look at them? And does anybody have any any feedback, any things they've identified? If not, would somebody like to make a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of August eighth, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you, Mr. Lionel. Mr. Neely, thank you for your second. Assuming there's no discussion. Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Maccar?
Mr. Maccar's going to abstain. He wasn't at the meeting.
Mr. Neely, how do you vote?
Mr. Neely votes in favor.
Mr. Lionel?
Mr. Lionel votes in favor.
And Mr. Shaw votes in favor. That passes four zero. So the minutes from August eighth are approved. And that is it, unless there's any other business. Somebody wants to make a motion for adjournment? Thank you, Mr. Neely. We are adjourned officially at seven forty-four.